Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Welcome everyone to the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. It's Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. It's now 6:03. Location is on Zoom and we are in the lower theater in Town Hall. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? Kevin?
None.
I think, so we might be confused about how item number one got added to our agenda. I apologize for having you two here. We don't believe that falls under a town. It'd be a village ordinance for the, any parade. So we think that would just need to go in front of the trustees.
Yes, and I will check in with both of you and put you on the next agenda for the village trustees. Even though they had a meeting today, it's a separate, special meeting. You'll be on the next agenda for the regular meeting.
Do you have a sense for what date that might be?
What's the date?
Tuesday tonight.
Okay. All right, that'll work.
Yeah, they should have plenty of time still, right?
Well, I'm hopeful that it won't be all that tricky or controversial. So our planning for graduation does kind of hinge on this, but you know, if ninth is the next time they meet, then that's fine. And Tom.
I wish I had a better answer for you, but typically that's village. You know, the alumni parade is, so that's not our, it's not our role either. So I don't know if they can meet before the ninth, but maybe perhaps we could see if they can. So, because there's a lot pending on their decision, correct?
Well, it's, it's, we are crafting an outside the box graduation plan. And so there's a lot that goes into it. Certainly, we hope that it would be approved. I don't think that it will disrupt the operations of the Village of Bellas Falls too terribly on that one evening. I think that actually the town will probably like it. So I'm optimistic that it won't be all that tricky and that it'll pass.
Great. Okay, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
Congratulations to everyone in the class of 2020.
We will pass that along.
All right.
Thanks.
We're going to strike that from the agenda and we need to add a executive session at the end to discuss employment. Shannon? Oh, you're here. It says Shannon. Okay, anything else? All right, we need to approve the minutes from May 5th, 2020 meeting.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 meeting, Select Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the May 5th, 2020 Select Board meeting. All those in favor would signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Where's Peter?
He's 6'9", 3229, maybe?
I think that's him muted. Sorry about that.
Rings a bell anyways.
He can, he muted himself.
Peter, are you unmuted? Can you unmute yourself?
Well, that is him. Okay, I'll unmute him.
I tried, I tried doing it and it won't connect me.
We got you now, we can hear you.
Okay.
I thought you were there.
Yeah, that's why I had to use the phone. I wrote aye on that.
Sorry about that, and I didn't know if you had any more input on item one, but I did the best I could there.
By the way, you're not on TV either, so.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think, I just want to let you know.
Actually, okay, thank you. I don't know. Garrett, Everett, Sue, do you see us?
Yes.
We're not on TV. I got you. So Fact TV, I hope they can hear us and maybe they'll push a couple buttons. Okay, so we approve the minutes. Public comment on items not on the agenda. It'll be three minutes per person. I don't see anyone on there. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Bob DeRosa. I am of Village Town, excuse me, resident. Now I guess, it's all coming down quickly, most of my mind. I'm concerned about the terminations in Town Hall. I'm concerned about the choices when I see 25-plus year old, tenured employee leaving. That's a concern. Carries a lot of history with it. So, but I don't want to get into that. I don't agree with the decision, but I want to get in with it, into is how they have. I feel that I looked and I saw no actions of the board considering anything like this. So, and then I spoke to a couple of board members. They would seem not aware of this. I don't feel that any individual, including the chair, has a right to do, to go to the town manager and give this kind of instruction without the board being aware. That's a serious issue for me as a voter. Been around, been around government for a few years here too. This makes me uncomfortable. The whole thing, and Chuck has told me that he's putting substantial amounts of effort and energy into doing the best he can to help take care of people who are leaving. It's not the point. The point is going forward, are we going to, are we going to kind of try to change culture of Rockingham Bellas Falls? Are we going to go on with the way it's been? I think honestly that we should probably reconsider whether we want a mandatory form of government. Why do you think managers don't last? Because they don't get to do their jobs is my answer. Period. And I think that that question's brought up and there's enough, people have enough to say. People will reconsider it. It's, we, maybe we should be a city, have a mayor. I haven't got the answer. I only have some questions. That's all I have to say. And by the way, I want to thank Peter Golick. I understand, although I can't see him, is with us there. Peter has consistently in his years on the board respected the actions of the voters. And that's not always easy, but once the vote happens at town meeting, Peter Golick has stood behind that. That's important to me as an individual. There be Peter if you're there, thank you.
Yeah, I heard you, Bob, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Managers report.
I have nothing to report right now. I am giving reports to the Select Board and trustees every day. I do that at the time being, especially as I take over and changes are made. If there are any questions of those daylies, you can raise them at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, so are we renumbering these or just going to the first one being number two? First one, number two. Okay, so number one's been scratched. We'll move on to the first item on the agenda, Public Works, Everett Hammond. Muted, Everett. We can't hear you.
I got some noise coming in the window, hang on.
Looks like he's up on the third floor.
Yeah. Yeah, I could have been down there, but I choose to be a third floor, so I think people can hear better. If anybody watching, okay? Okay, so I went out there, Andy was there, myself, Mike Griffin. This is up on the wall site visit. Jane Ryan, Ellen Poderski. Jane and Ellen, they're part of the estate of the property. I think it's maybe 19, no, I'm not sure. Number one, Blake Street, I believe, I'm not sure the number, but they're the ones that own the house up beyond the leaning wall. So they're all in favor, the whole estate is in favor of replacing this wall. It is leaning. I had Devo shoot it earlier today. And previous to that, back in four years ago, he had shot it. And then he shot it again last spring. So it's actually moved four inches, a point, yeah, point, four inches for the last, from 2016 to 2019. So we're paired to three years. It did not move according to his shot over the last year during construction. But on the other hand, there's not like a pinpoint corner of that wall either. So there's a little variable there, you know, are they shooting the exact same corner? So yet, but anyway, the, just as the wall is moving, you know, probably maybe an inch per year on the top of the wall and the more years that do go by, you know, the acceleration will continue. Having said that, you know, then again, it may stay there for another 10 years without moving. You know, I did talk to a structural engineer a number of years ago. I said, when do you know a wall is going to fail? He said, it's basically a crap shoot. No one really knows when it's going to fail, but eventually it will fail. So with the closeout of this project, you know, and then recently found out that this wall is in the town right away, it'd be nice if we could actually finish this wall up and be done with this section of road all the way up through there, so that it doesn't collapse during the middle of winter or even fall down on a car or someone walking by along the edge of the road. So I did, you probably got, you got, all have the packet. The estimate I've got in here is $80,000. The town portion, the town would actually act like GC, or at least I would myself, at least while I'm still here to get this thing moving. That's roughly $20,000. That's for cutting the wall, reinforcement, concrete, crushing, a crushed stone, topsoil, seed and mulch. And we'd use, there is a cost for the granular backfill in the pit, but we would use that pit. I did not count a cost in there. Theoretically, yes, there's a cost. We do not have to pay for it. It's our own material. And then my recommendation is to use the same concrete sub, sub work that Basin's used over on Cherry Hill Wall. That's Mike Pilo. He's done an excellent job on that wall. And actually, we negotiate a lower price, much lower price than the Cherry Hill Wall. A lot of that being is the Cherry Hill Wall is a very complex, very, very complicated, you know, with that steep slope project. This one is not, nowhere near as complex as that. So his cost would be $36,000. And then the earthwork bid that I received, four bids, I put them out on Friday for quick bid. Adams Trucking Excavating, that's $19,500. John Corvino, $21,840. Basin Brothers, $23,125. Tom Call, $26,780. So they're right in the range of what I had estimated for the $24,000. So in essence, what I would recommend, and I recommend, this is a good time to do this wall. As far as the funding, on the back of the memo, I had $60,000 from Burt Blake Park Street Project and $20,000 from the FY20 Highway Budget. To be conservative, I would actually, you know, the project's not done yet. There'll be a roughly estimated $50,000 from Burt Blake Park and take the remaining out of the FY20 Highway Budget. Talking to Shannon earlier, there will be funds available for the remainder of that. It doesn't quite equal $80,000. What I would recommend is proceed forward on this, the, to the stop sign, not going up the driveway. So Station 88, if you leave, if you drive, if you go out there and look at it, you'll see 88 on the pavement. That's just before their driveway, probably three or four feet. That's about the point where the wall starts going out of the right of way. So at that point, if they would like to improve that, you know, and Jane talked about, maybe they would. That, if they want to go around a corner and prove that, make a wider driveway, that's something they can consider. The owners. So my recommendation would be to proceed forward with this with a, with a cost of $80,000 estimated. The town cost $20,000. Mike Pilo, $36,000. Earthwork by Adams Trucking Excavating, $19,500. That was a lump sum, just by the way, on the $19,500. So that's, that should come up to probably $85,500. I did not add it up, but 85,5, or excuse me, $75,500. I would recommend holding within a budget of $80,000 in case for any kind of contingencies. And what I, one thing I did not estimate, one of the things we do need to consider is a, some type of fence up on top of the wall, just to prevent somebody from falling over. And that can, that can be done after.
Can I have a question?
Yep.
Everett, did we, this is in the, the wall isn't a town right of way. Don't have a problem with getting it fixed, but do we know who actually installed that wall? Was it the owner to put that in or was it the town?
Yeah, Pete, that's a good question. My guess would be, and it is different theories, because that same questions I've heard in other towns. My, my guess would be the town, the road was probably narrow at one point, and then it went to, to the width it's at, and to do that, they probably had to put the wall in, meaning the town, pushing it back within a right of way. No, Stephen Poderski, I heard has passed away, and I'm not sure if he would even have known the answer.
Right, and the only, the only thing I think is this, if the town gave him permission, because it's in the town right of way to install a wall to hold his lawn back or the ground, which would mean that some of the burden might be on the landowner. I, I don't know, I'm not trying to put it there, but you know, that could involve a title search or looking at, at his deed and find out when that was done or whatever, and then see if we can find anything prior to 60, and ever going to find it in the Select Board Minutes, because they can't find them in the vault downstairs. So God help us on that, but you know.
Mr. Chairman, the correction on that too would be Stephen Bobrowski.
Oh, did I pronounce it wrong?
I believe you did.
What did I say? Did I say Poderski?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about, right, Bobrowski, that's correct.
Right.
And it's Poderski, Ellen is the, is daughter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else have any question? I have a question. Is it a second bid? It seems like this was all put together very quickly. And I'm wondering why we didn't consider it during this first phase of that road. But now it seems like it's coming together quickly and we have to act.
Nope, great, that's a good question.
Time to get a second bid on the concrete.
Right now, I mean, you could, if we wanted to get this thing moving while the, the closeout of this project is happening, and while I'm still here to help get this thing moving, act as a GC, I guess I would recommend doing it now. Mike, Mike's numbers are very favorable.
The first part of my question will probably answer the second part. Why, why we didn't consider this if it's been like this forever? We just went up there and spent all the money on engineering and designing and road construction and neither, how come we're doing it now?
Yep, no, I can answer that. So a lot of this goes back to the RFP that we just recently approved, that I recommend, and I believe Chuck and Wendy were all for. It's the right of way RFP. So when the water line and the road line and all that was done, it was basically done within the realms of the, the limits of the road in the back of the sidewalks. So I asked Devo a year ago, I didn't hear until the spring, and I finally pushed him more. I said, you know, where's, you know, what is the limits of the right of way on Blake Street? And he finally looked that up and gave me some information. Turns out that wall is in the right of way. So all of that, the water project, the road project and all that was done without the benefit of a current, of a right of way plan. And, and there are no, there's very, very limited right of way plans, which we've talked about this before. That's why I recommend prior to any project the town does, have Devo move forward and complete the right of way. So you know what, so the town knows what, what is our responsibility. And we did not know that until probably a little while ago. That is the thing I recommend, that stay with Devo's, and, and he's busy, I know, right now he's busy neck. And we'll have to, someone will have to push him to continue with the right of way stuff. But thinking down the road, so if there's a water project down the road, a road project down the road, have them start two years ahead of time. So that's a lot of it. It would have been ideally nice. I thought about that wall a year ago. I'm thinking, well, you know what, it hasn't fallen, we don't have the money in the budget, which we did not. Closing, closing out this project, there's the money available. Let's shift it, you know, because we saved money on the wall that was going to be by the tennis courts. There was, there was going to be a small wall or high curb there. Instead, there's just going to be a curb. So no, the movement, you know, as we move forward, no, definitely the right of way needs to happen. And that would, that was, that would have answered that question well over a year ago, probably even two years ago on that wall.
Okay, are you satisfied, Peter, about not doing any more research to make a, take action?
It's a moot point at this, at this juncture, because as Reverend said, that, that wall's been leaning for as long as I can remember. And, and I do know the family, but that's not relevant to this point. But I, I just, it goes back almost to the roof situation, Saxon Driver, who, who's responsible? Even though it isn't a town right of way and, you know, it could take a while to research it. And I don't know how much of a rush we are to get this fixed or whether there's a time limit, but it may take a while to get this thing sorted out if you're trying to do any research to it. So, you know, I guess it's a board decision at this point.
Okay, anybody wants to make a motion?
If I could throw one thing out there, I guess I would recommend the motion, if it's good, if it's in favor, is using Mike Pilo and Adams Trucking Excavating.
So just for, for making the motion, should we say 50,000 remaining from Burt Blake Project? Or pick what you're 80 projected and you're getting 10 from somewhere else?
Right, I would say that, that's good. Projected $50,000 for the Burt Blake Park Street Project and the remaining $30,000 from the FY20 Highway Budget.
And what's your total number now that you got your expenses?
Still 80,000, and that gives us like a $4,000 or $4,500 buffer there for any type of retaining wall, not retaining wall, but a fence up on top.
But the 50, so 50 from Burt and 20 from, where'd you go?
No, 50 from Burt and 30,000. So modify that 30 from General Highway Fund, or modify the 20 to 30. So keep it at 80.
Does that part of the street just below the retained wall or what I asked that last?
That, that has been holding, I, I mean, it could use one. It's been holding up, and actually, when I did the road profile itself, I raised that grade right there. If you, if you remember, it's actually, the road itself is, is about a foot higher than it was. Plus, we're putting a curb in there. And, and putting a wall in is going to be tough, because you got, you've got the pole there and you got the hydrant just around the corner. I would love to put one there. In fact, originally, when Chuck and I talked, it's like, please, I'd like to put one there. And we do not have the dollars for that. That could be probably added down the road if it does start failing with block. I would then maybe use granite blocking, you know, you know, because they're not going to be able to get a footing in there at all, like a traditional footing, this one here.
Is there riprap or something there now? I thought it was there.
No, it's, it's just dirt right now, no riprap on that one. Where you're seeing riprap is on Mike Griffin's section of a real steep slope. That's the one where Dave Cobb used to live.
Okay.
But that down the road though, you may be right. We may wish we added one. Right now, I, it's not in the budget. I think I'd put the curb in, because that, that'll help it, the curb.
So in relation to the wall, are you looking at like forming up and pouring cement and all that or?
Right, yep, it'll be a five to six foot footing, stone underneath. And then the wall itself would be 18 inches at the bottom of the wall, one foot on top, six foot tall wall. So it'll be sticking up out of the pavement by roughly five and a half feet. It'll be battered back from 18 inches at the bottom, up on top, it'll be a six inch batter or six feet. So I guess an inch per foot.
Was that all rebarred or no?
All rebarred, yep. It's all engineered. So I did, I did a schematic on a wall, sent it up to Todd Indiger. He's the one that did the wall on Cherry Hill. I said, I think section, section A, maybe section B, because that was four different sections. One of those will work, and it turns out the smaller one will work. So, so, so it is engineered to withstand, you know, using a heel on that. The heel will actually help, help keep the wall from falling over.
So there isn't any more economical ways to do this, like I see a lot of them doing, yeah, like the blocks that are rebarred in with a foundation?
Yeah, and I thought about that too. If there's, there's ledge in this area, so if we start, no, not to this, this existing foundation is not, does not appear to be deep enough. That's why it's all moving. So if you're going to start from scratch, you want a, you know, a proper five to six foot footing, 18 inches thick, and then build a rebar off of that, so you can tie it all in. I looked at the possibility of going granite blocks. Then you can custom cut those or even ready rock. The problem with that, you've got the slope of the road at 6%. You get up to the stairs and then the, you know, those usually work better at a very flat or maybe one or 2% grade. You get to the stairs, you've got to start trimming and customizing to make that work. Plus, you've got the, you've got a water sewer service when you get up by the stairs, and you've got ledge. So if we hit ledge, you can't, you can't get the adequate footing or the berry on those, on the blocking. So in the, you know, I looked at, you know, like I said, granite, ready rock and cast and place. I think the reason cast and place was done beforehand, if we do hit ledge, we'll probably square it up and then clean it really well, drill it and pin to that.
Let me ask you, if I may, aesthetically, do we have any plans for the aesthetic look of that?
I talked about that with Mike Pilo. He said, well, maybe you could add, you know, some type of finish to it. I said, well, yes, we could, but then I don't know if he had enough of the forms anyway, that will add cost. You know, I'm not sure what, but we did not do that on Cherry Hill Wall. And if he started doing that here and, and maybe down the road, every wall the town is going to be looking at doing down the road, may have to have that type of finish. And then do you really want to set yourself up for that?
Right.
You know, because it will be a request. So I, at this point, I said, no, let's go straight. So this will have, for aesthetics, though, this will have a curb in front of it. So when we're all done, the curb will be in front of it. It'll be a little bit of, kind of a 10% slope, maybe 5% slope from the top of the curb to the edge of the wall. And that will, that'll then could be, you know, it'll be, it'll be grass, grass seed.
Right. Like we foresee more of these things coming up now if we've got our right of ways all squared away? I mean, you think, you see other people coming in the same situations here?
Offhand right now, I would say no. I mean, I could check the mic to ask him, hey, what do you think? You know, because some of the walls, say for example, if it's a cast and place wall on Front Street, that's kind of down over the bank, no one's going to see that really going driving by. You know, and I can find out the cost. If it's reasonable, maybe we can add, you know, if he's got the forms, maybe we can add it in.
On this project?
Yeah, if that's, yeah, if that's where you're going with that. I'm not sure if you're going with that or not.
Oh, I was just having 10 more retained walls come up over the next several years now that we've determined.
I don't, I don't see that in this town. You know, the wall, the next one is a Front Street wall. The other thing, let me just throw that, it's good for the record right now, but on Rockingham Street, one of the buildings, the building owned by Steve Moore, someday will need a, it's at the edge of the right of way. Something the town to think about. But there's a vault, like an empty space under the sidewalk. It protrudes out into the, out into the road, maybe about a foot. So in, in the sidewalks acting like a slab, so that at some point, you know, worker Steve Moore, the town will have to, to probably have him build a wall on, you know, instead of a wood framed foundation, fill that all in, you know, and then rebuild the sidewalk. So that, I don't think it's a huge project, but it needs to be done. It's a wall you won't see, but it's a building wall. It's a matter of whose responsibility that would be. But no, they're not a lot, Front Street, then we, there's a lot of shift toward large structures. Then that's what I would do after that. Those are structure grants for the large structures, and we just keep applying it for those. Because there's, Leach Road needs about three more, and there's a bunch of others in town, you know, that really need it.
Okay. Make a motion or are we moving on here?
I'll make the motion that I recommend. I move that we contract with Pilo and Sons to complete the cast and place footings and wall from the south corner north, a distance of 88 feet from the street sign for $36,000. With the town purchasing materials direct estimate at, is it now? 20,000, that's the recommendation. I'm sure what the, I'm sure what the motion should be.
80 is the total.
For a total of 80,000 with 50,000 coming anticipated from the remaining Burt Blake Park Street Project, 30,000 from the Highway Budget. Oh, and Adams, sorry, and Adams Trucking for the. Oh, and Adam, sorry, and Adam's trucking for the, um, for the earthwork moving.
Are you done, Sue? Because I'll second if you're done.
Yeah, I'm done, I think. I think I got it all in.
Motion's been made, she said that. Motion's been made and seconded, uh, for the uh, retaining wall contractor with the numbers listed, uh, motion's been made, just seconded, any other discussion? Although
I don't know if I remember said Blake Street in that, so that's, um, make sure that Blake, it's Blake Street wall. I don't think I mentioned the street.
What do you get? What do you get? You got it?
I think so. Because, um, I recommend contracting with Pilo and Sons to and Buck Adams to complete the cast and place footings and wall for the south corner north, a distance of eighty eight feet on Blake Street to the street sign for thirty six thousand with the town purchasing materials directly for the project estimated at eighty thousand dollars with fifty thousand coming from the Burt Blake Park Street project and thirty thousand coming from the fiscal year twenty twenty highway budget.
So prod, the materials directly for the project estimate it should remain at twenty with a total project cost of eighty, right, Everett?
That's correct, yeah. Yes.
Okay, motion they may seconded any more discussion? All of the favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next, we have equipment trailer, I did, equipment trailer, RFP Everett Hammond.
Okay, uh, so the current Rogers, uh, twenty one ton trailer, that was, uh, actually traded in, uh, back in nineteen ninety six or ninety five, I believe, uh, with the town backhoe and that was a trade in due to the fact that that was the, uh, in nineteen ninety four, the town purchased the CAT three eleven excavator and, uh, due to the fact that it was a lot cheaper to have the excavator to move that around with the trailer than it was to have a a draught type machine, which would have been at least forty thousand dollars more and more wear and tear, uh, so the excavator's still running, still going well. Uh, so this trailer is, like I said, twenty five years old. Uh, it, uh, the the cross members are rotting out, it will not pass inspection. Uh, to get this up and running, I I talked to Wally and I talked to, uh, Rick Crawford, Rick said it's a very nasty job to complete this, probably at least three weeks, plus putting on the deck. With a cross member, you gotta, you gotta take one side rail right off, you gotta take all, cut each of those cross members out. Uh, and you've got to support it while you're working on it, make sure things do not twist on you. Uh, by the time you are, you know, get all that, um, you're gonna have probably thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars into it. I came up with a rough estimate of maybe twelve, so we're right in that ballpark. Uh, Rick says, uh, it's it's time to replace it and sell it for what you can get it for. There's people out there that can use it the way it is. You know, that might be a farmer, might, who knows, but there's, it's always, it's got a home for somebody. But he said that right now it's time to let it go and look at purchasing a new one. The guys kept kept, have been keeping an eye on Equipment Magazine Trailer, Equipment Magazines. I've never heard of Rampart or Rampant, they see that in the magazine, I include them in a bid and they were quite a bit lower. Uh, Lucky's trailers, I'm not sure who, what prevent, what bid they would have had as far as type of trailer. But Rampant, they actually make their own, uh, the structure sound and they they do sell quite a few up in the northeast. They're, they're around, if you look, there are stock parts, so you can buy the parts in about three or four places in Vermont and obviously Massachusetts. But it's no markup, they make it and they sell them. Uh, they're, they're probably, uh, four to, four to six weeks out. Uh, considerable difference in cost. This trailer is a little bit bigger, it's twenty five ton versus the twenty ton. Uh, yes, we do have a twenty one ton that, on some of the equipment we haul, it's, it's been pushing it. We've been probably over limit, you know, we don't have scales on it, but we have, probably have been over limit. Uh, not on, not on our excavator, not on a roller, but some of the other stuff we've hauled in the past. Uh, and when you do load up the roller, you've got to, you know, you've got to roll, uh, load the roller, then drop the, drop the, uh, jiggle the, uh, ramps around, center it up and drop the ramps in there again and chain it. I have not seen him do it, but I know there's a little, little maneuvering around to get it in there. Uh, Wally Pete, they recommend, uh, with his twenty five ton trailer, uh, through Rampant, twenty seven, five, twenty nine. That's, uh, delivered. Yellow, yellow paint.
Sorry, what are your thoughts?
He was still talking.
No, I'm done, that's.
I'll wait. Anyone else have anything? Yes, right.
Did we, I know it's not always great, but have we looked at any used trailers out there? I know that lots of contractors are always upgrading their trailers and those might be in.
Right, and I talked to Andy about it, you could do something like that, problem is you may be getting, you know, someone else's problem, there's a reason they're getting rid of them. You know, if you go something new like this, we should easily get, uh, another twenty five years out of a new trailer, maybe thirty. You know, uh, but I mean, that's something we can do, but, uh, I guess I would recommend, you know, we, if we got twenty five years out of it, it was a twelve thousand dollar trailer then. Uh, so the cost of five hundred dollars a year. And it has saved a lot of money by having the guys have the trailer versus, uh, trying to have someone move stuff around. You know, you could do that too, uh, for example. You know, we use, uh, prior to the roller, we probably used it one to two times a week for during this course of summer. So maybe forty five times a year, that would have been at two hundred dollars a move, probably nine thousand bucks. Now we're probably two to three times a week uh, for a thirty week time period, uh, seventy five times a year, fifteen thousand. So in, uh, and and we may get three thousand dollar trade in, you know, or a sell for this, you know, because it does have value for somebody. So I'm I'm all for used, if you know there's something good and used out there, but at this point, I would recommend these guys, you know, that they're not marking up, well, other than your own markup, but it's not going to a supplier that's then remarking it up, it's going direct to the manufacturer from them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the town of Rocketham purchase twenty five ton tag along.
Keep going, Bear.
Twenty five ton tag along equipment trailer from Rampant for twenty seven, five, twenty nine.
All seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, down Rocketham purchase twenty five ton tag on from Rampant, twenty seven thousand, five hundred, twenty nine dollars. All, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Wow.
Nay. Next, both, both fire chiefs were there a minute ago, did they, were they, we're gonna make them wait, we're gonna introduce them?
They wanna, um, come back as a formal agenda item, they thought maybe an introduction early on in the meeting, but seeing that we've moved on, they said we'll come back later.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Everett, uh, go ahead.
That's right. Okay, that was a three, two pass, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, uh, Sax River Sidewalk, okay, that's, I believe, next on the, yep, next on the agenda. So, uh, I'm just gonna reiterate what this includes again. Main Street, that's starting at Pleasant Street going four hundred feet east of Pleasant Street toward Bellas Falls. That's, uh, and then Pleasant Street on the east side from Main Street, three hundred feet north to Rice Road. And Pleasant Street on the west side is an overlay section of three hundred feet. Grove Street, that'll be improving one sixty, hundred sixty six feet section from Main Street up to the top of the hill. And that'll be a, a simple improvement, ripping the pavement up, uh, regrading it, repaving it, up base and top. So I put the bids out, uh, we've got a number of bids, actually you'll see on the let's see, it happened, actually, there's, there was a lot of interest in it, six bids. I won't go through them all, but Vermont Roadworks, uh, they were low bid at forty seven, nine, forty, Tom Call was fairly close behind at fifty three, five, forty two. Uh, and then the rest were anywhere from fifty four, seven, thirty up to, uh, seventy six, twen- two, thirty one. We're getting quite a bit of sidewalk work completed with this. I did a little reference check, uh, I've used before. You know, they, you do gotta, you know, keep an eye on them, but they are, they're good as far as doing sidewalks, roadwork might be different as far as paving roads. Sidewalk work is pretty simple stuff, as long as they get it graded correctly and and then they they pave it correctly. I talked to, I get a message from Jack Mahoney, Radable Housing Authority. He said, uh, they've done a fair amount of a curb and sidewalk forum, have had no problems, they, uh, did a great job, straightforward and great guy. Um, there's no reason at this point to jump over the low bid to go with, uh, Tom Call and I would have had to do some reference checks on Tom as well. Uh, in the budget, uh, we've got fifteen thousand in the current budget. Uh, and fifteen thousand in next year's budget, so there's a total of thirty. Uh, the gravel crushing, which we'll be talking about next, they will, after, if that's approved, there'll be available twenty three thou-, uh, there's twenty three thousand, seven, fifty available in that after we do the crushing. Uh, so we could take twenty thousand out of that, that'd be a total of fifty thousand, leaving a two thousand dollar contingency for the project. So I think, uh, it's getting a lot of work done. My recommendation would be to accept this bid. And, uh, you know, maybe every two years, maybe the town puts a little bit of sidewalk work out for, uh, Sax River instead of, uh, you know, once every year, because every, every year fifteen thousand, you're not gonna get a lot done. And you'll get lower, lower prices if you can scoop up, uh, a fifty thousand dollar contract. That's, that's about it.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have, uh, just a question, a clarification, I, I, uh, should probably address this to Shannon, I think I sent her an email uh, about the twelve thousand dollars from twenty nineteen that never got used up. And according to statute in, uh, the VLCT, it should have been rolled over, so I don't know if that's still in effect or not, uh, just trying to clarify.
So that stayed in the highway general fund?
Come back on that, you say?
That, those funds are in the highway general fund?
The twelve thousand from twenty nineteen, she's saying Peter stayed in this, uh, highway general fund.
Well, the statute says if it is for a specific item, which it was, Saxon River Sidewalk, then it should have rolled in and you've been used for the same purpose the following year, so I'm just trying to find out if we're doing this right or or what, and I know it probably ended up in the surplus, but.
Peter, I wonder if we put three additional in on top of that twelve and got the fifteen from twenty twenty?
It may, it's me, uh, Katan, I'm just trying to get a clarification here.
I was asking a question.
I don't think we add.
You remember, Sue?
No, I don't remember that we did add, I think we, it was separate.
I thought so too, we, okay. I don't have the answer to that question. I have one question, Everett. Section there on the north side, uh, Main Street, across from Old Cushman's Restaurant there.
Okay.
That tree root protruding the thing, what do you do about that when you put your new one in there?
Okay, that, uh, tree root you're talking about there is Jim McCaffrey property, correct? Uh, the second one in from the, the one on the corner, I believe you're talking about.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, I I talked to Jim, I I talked to actually all landlords on that side there. I haven't had a chance to catch up to one of them, uh, uh, on the, uh, Pleasant Street, yeah. But that tree there, I talked to Jim, uh, he has no problem cutting that tree, I'll have to go through the tree warden on that one, drag it out back, hole and he'll cut it up.
Really?
That'll, that'll eliminate that problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was the tree in bad shape or?
Uh, no, but you, this, we'd have to, if we do go through there, we're gonna be probably cutting a mass of root and it's probably not gonna help it, you know, for us to do the sidewalk, we're gonna rip up the pavement, we're gonna go down one foot and put in, uh, twelve inches of dense grade.
Yeah.
And then three and a half inches of pavement and then we're gonna, you know, dress it all up, but it, it will, without cutting the root, it will come back.
Right. But you've already discussed all that or arranged all that?
Yep, I've talked to landlord on that one. There is one tree, there's a, is a little different if you go up, uh, Pleasant Street.
Yes.
The one on Bucks, Bucks Street, Bucks, uh, property, so I tried to, not that I want to cut every tree in town, I'm not trying to do that. But he's not in favor of cutting that tree, so we'll have to, if the roots in the way, we'll have to cut the root.
On the corner?
On the corner, right, just in from the corner ways.
That first tree also looks like it's leaning, perhaps it's just this picture, but is it? Makes any difference now?
Well, it's leaning probably toward the house there, maybe. But it's actually, it's the one on the left, not the one you see on the corner by zero.
Uh, yep.
Further up past the pole, you see that, there's a tree there? On the left hand side, between the, between the sidewalk and the road.
Yep.
That, that's the, we can't cut that tree.
Yep.
Uh, so we'll have to deal with the root and, uh, hopefully it won't be a huge one there. I don't believe it's a monster tree.
I wasn't entertaining, we cut any trees, I was asking about the roots, but it seemed like you have a good solution for that.
Yeah, but but I will still be talking to the, uh, the tree warden, so it's not as, as simple as, uh, just cut the tree. I will go through the tree warden on that.
Okay, and want to, want to, uh, make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that select or accept the, uh, bid of forty seven thousand, nine hundred and forty from Vermont Roadworks, reference the Sax River Sidewalk, RFP Project twenty twenty, as specified in the documents tonight.
Total?
Uh, total was four, forty seven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Second?
Second.
Question remained and seconded, uh, the Sax River Sidewalk work referencing RFP twenty twenty and the numbers stated, any more discussion?
Yeah, one, one more question, I don't know if Everett can answer or not, but, uh, I don't think Tom called those paving, is he subcontracting, the subbing that out, Everett, do you know?
That would have been a sub and, and that's the big thing, this guy does, uh, he has some small earthwork stuff he does and he does paving, so there's part of the big difference, he doesn't need to mark his own paving up. Um, if I can recommend that adding the twenty sixty for contingency, uh, for total of fifty, that would be helpful for, uh, Andy or Chuck, whoever's overseeing this project. It's not a big contingency, but it's a case, something does develop.
Do I want to amend the motion?
Uh, I guess so, sure. What is it?
Uh, well, if you look at the bottom, my recommendation, forty seven, nine, forty is their bid plus a two, two thousand sixty contingency for a total of fifty thousand dollars. Doesn't mean we're gonna spend fifty, but it allows a, you know, Chuck a little leverage there, a little leeway. You know, in case something does develop.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to change the amount from forty seven, nine, forty to fifty.
You second that?
Yep.
All right, been amended, seconded, fifty thousand dollars, Sax River Sidewalk, RFP twenty twenty, locations uh, listed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Moving right along, concrete crushing, pulverizing RFP.
Okay, this is in the old section of the town pit. If you drive in there, you'll see that, we got the picture up back, it's a huge pile of probably twenty five hundred yards and concrete pile, it gets, pretty tough to estimate exactly. Some of it toward the back is stacked, pretty tight toward the front, you can see it's kind of loose looking. Uh, so, uh, actually the numbers came in pleasantly less than I thought. Uh, I sent it out there, I got Fuzzy Brothers, they've been on it, Basin Brothers and no other bids. Usually, uh, McCullough might been on something like that, but he's, uh, at this point, right out straight, he's pretty busy. They're the biggest crushing company in the state. Uh, Fuzzy, six fifty for inch and a quarter gravel, that was thirty two, five, two and a quarter gravel, thirty thousand. Uh, Basens was, uh, forty three thousand for the inch and a quarter and, uh, thirty nine thousand, two fifty, you know, for the two and a quarter. I looked at it, uh, this is the type of gravel we do not want to be putting out on the gravel roads. We, we, our intention here is to to crush this up, have it so it's a usable product, so we can use for a base somewhere. So, you know, I put the inch and a quarter in a spec and the two and a quarter just to see the price difference. After talking, Pete, uh, and I met in the pit, we, um, talked about, what about maybe even a three inch? If we go with a three inch, you can run it through the primary crusher and that'll, and we can do that, uh, actually at uh, four fifty cubic yard. So that alone would be twenty six thousand, two fifty. Not knowing what the product's gonna look like, I'm recommending that we do half and half, you know, and if we don't like any of that, we'd actually go with, uh, um, the smaller two and a quarter, uh, but I, I think we'll be all right. Uh, City of Claremont, they did some for them, they're gonna use it as a base road, a concrete gravel mixture and, uh, uh, that'll be good product for that, for example. uh, that'll be good product for that. For example, this wall that's coming down, that'll go in a pile. And if we had that all crushed up prior to use backfilling that wall, that same material from that wall and, and gravel that we're going to mix with it would be used for backfill behind that wall. And, uh, due to, due to metal and due to all the concrete, that's why I do not recommend putting in rows and going to the inch and a quarter gravel. Uh, you know, as we run out of gravel, we'll probably have to purchase it, but this will be, it'll free up that space. So as we end up with more concrete, we can stockpile that and that, and that was, that stockpile you see there was from, uh, two thousand eleven. So it's a nine year stockpile. That's, uh, the last one we had there was all used up during Irene. So probably every nine, eight, nine, ten years, uh, if you do less concrete sidewalk, obviously you'll take a while longer. Uh, but we do not just dump it over bank. It's, it's reused, re-crushed, and this is, this does help. So my recommendation is to, uh, uh, as you see on the bottom there, accept Fuzzy Brothers, six dollars per cubic yard for twenty-five hundred of concrete slash gravel. Uh, and four fifty for, uh, twenty-five hundred cubic yards of concrete gravel for a total of twenty-six thousand two fifty. And in the budget, there's fifty thousand. This will leave you, uh, the twenty-three and change, uh, which is being used for Saxton River sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, Everett?
Yep.
How's our regular, where, where we use an inch and a quarter now on the roads?
Yeah, we're about out. We're, we're close to being out.
That was my question is how much we had stockpiled, et cetera.
Yeah, there, there may be, I don't know, five hundred yards, thousand yards, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, I, you know, if they had to, obviously they'll get by, but we've got a new budget year coming up. So if they need, at some point they need a little bit, you know, we can go buy it. Those have to be careful what they buy. You know, we do have a fair amount of two and a quarter and the bigger stuff, but I definitely would not recommend making out of this, and we do not want to take the two and a quarter gravel, that's not this gravel, a different gravel, and crush that down to, uh, inch and a quarter. And they could be a waste of crushing because it's been crushed once.
Right.
But it, but it's a good base gravel. It's not going to go anywhere. Um, you know, it will be used, you know, and it's, it's never a waste and for, could be a real bad mud season. We have put out two and, two and a quarter gravel in the mud season before. But you do have to cover it up again later.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, Tim Graves is, 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 has some decent prices. We'll have to check, Andy, I'll check those guys out. See what he's got for, uh, crushed gravel down there.
Entertained the motion?
So make the motion that we accept the bid from Fuzzy Brothers of six dollars for cubic yard, the twenty-five hundred cubic yard of concrete gravel and four fifty cubic yard from twenty-five hundred cubic yard of concrete gravel for a total of twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. They need to specify the size. It has pretty clear in your.
Yeah, you know, now, I don't, probably not just a total amount because the, the, the quantity may, may vary a little bit. You know, for example, they start crushing, uh, three inch, we like it, we'll spend more, I mean, we'll spend less.
Okay.
But if they start crushing, if they start crushing it, and, uh, boy, we don't like that, you know, maybe after the first day we switch over. We may not crush as, you know, the bottom line is we've got twenty-six thousand two fifty, uh, uh, and he can always rent it by Chuck.
In your motion, do you want, just for reference?
Twenty-six two fifty, I think that'd be good. I probably was too specific.
Okay.
Twenty-six two fifty.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those, uh, favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Winter, uh, sand, stone, RFP.
All right, uh, getting toward, and one more after this. Okay, we put this, the sand out to bid, uh, sand and stone. We're going to, one of these days, you know, all these towns are going to start running out of, uh, good sand. You know, right now JP's got some decent sand. You know, he says he's got a lot, but, but what I'd like to do here is experiment a little bit. So, you know, when we have freezing rain, we're dry here. Uh, we go through a lot of sand. So what I want, what I'm trying to do here is, is go, go for forty-five hundred yards of sand. And my original RFP went out for fifteen hundred yards of stone. I did not have enough in the budget to actually achieve that, that goal. So I want to stick with the forty-five hundred yards of sand, recommend the JP's price of nine, nine dollars. Uh, FOB and fourteen fifteen delivered. We'd work with them, you know, as a tandem, one of our trucks along with one of his trucks, kind of fifty fifty to get it in place. And modify the stone down to one thousand yards. Uh, we'd end up getting from Cold River. He's actually, uh, let's see, I had to convert their bid actually to, uh, from a ton to yards. So it's twenty-three twelve per yard. Uh, loaded, twenty-eight ninety delivered. Uh, we would end up actually picking it up because we do not need to stockpile a thousand yards all at once. We could put up three or four hundred and then as the winter goes on, we need a little more, we'll get more. Uh, but the benefit would be, I believe, you know, we can cut back on sand. Nope. Chuck, I see you.
Okay, we got, we got a bugger in.
Okay. So by doing this, I think with the ice storms, I, I believe, you know, we could run it up their middle of maybe eight, ten, no more than a twelve foot strip. Enough to, uh, so people will see it. It'll be safe. It has to be a crushed stone, not a, uh, a round stone because a round would, you know, if it was like a piece stone, that would tend to kind of bounce off the road a little easier. Uh, it's worth a shot. I think, you know, some towns have been doing it. Or they're starting to do it. Uh, the three or four towns I know about, this is not doing it at a full-fledged yet. It's taking one of the guys and, and I'm saying one of the guys, it might change. Come next winter, but have one of the guys, you know, try it on their run, probably someone like Scott. Scott Bingham, I think it'd be a good run for him to try. Um, he's up there on the Parker Hill area, a little less traffic. Uh, so I think it's worth a shot because it may, and this will benefit the road too. The, the stone, especially if you get, if you, any town that puts winter sand down, it, you know, the, the, uh, it should be tested. So if the fines are more than it should be and you start putting inferior sand in there, number of years of adding inferior sand will destroy your, you'll have bad gravel roads in the spring, and that might be ten years before you know it. By then you've already got that sand in here. This will actually add a pure stone, which is what most towns do in the springtime. They don't add this small a stone, but adding the stone will help that road, all the gravel roads. So, uh, so this sort of is experimentation. It's not a lot. Um, it's, it's still, you know, forty-five hundred yards of sand with the, if it turns out it doesn't work at all, you know, we'll just have probably five hundred yards to start with, but there's no reason the stone will not work. You know, you put it out on icy roads, freezing rain, I'm sure the guy's going to write to that pile first before they go to the sand. And on the road, if this works, uh, there'll be a reason we don't need a sand shed ever. If I lost you guys on that. Zoo, can you hear me? I see you.
Yeah, I hear you. We lost, we lost the, uh, meeting.
Ms. Gary.
I'm still kicking around.
Yeah, still on, Peter's still on back TV. Um, we lost their, the, the, uh, meeting room.
Shannon to the rescue.
Shannon's trying to fix it. Fix something.
Be a hack.
You guys hear us?
Yeah.
Yep.
I can hear you.
Okay, you want me to continue, Guy Tano?
Just one minute, please.
Sure.
Blue breaker.
Oh.
Old fuse amp, now running around looking for one. Stefan's on the third floor.
Where to go?
Tell you to relieve those kidneys. We're just, uh, Stefan's in the restroom and then I think we're good. Uh, if you guys can see us, we can see and hear you, I think. We'll continue in just a moment. Sorry about that. We were looking for the cord before it died, but you'll have that. We got it. Here we are. Continue, Everett. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Uh, so in all that, you know, there's not, as you see, there's not a lot of people that really put in uh, material and, and part of the reason, uh, I just wanted, this is probably the earliest we've ever, the town's ever put it out, but let's get someone locked up. Um, my recommendation is to accept JP Trucking's winter sand proposal, nine dollars per cubic yard FOB for twenty-two fifty and, uh, cubic yards and the sand at fourteen fifty, fourteen fifteen for twenty-two fifty cubic yards. As they have him delivered for a total of fifty-two oh eight eight and accept, uh, Cold River Materials Winter Stone Proposal of seventeen per ton or approximately twenty-eight ninety per cubic yards for one thousand cubic yards, uh, for total of twenty-three thousand one twenty.
Okay, any questions? Is that cleared, everyone? Stone portion?
Yep.
I have one question here, Everett.
Yep.
Pete, I know other, I know the answer time wise, but not hauling all the sand ourselves. I know that's going to be the answer, but.
Right, uh, at this point I was hesitant to even, right now we're down, uh, three guys. So, you know, I think we'll be able to put one guy on maybe, you know, at some point to help haul this stuff, the haul sand, but uh, I, I don't want to promise JP that we're going to be able to truck it all and not do it. Uh, last year we did say, I think we did a fifty fifty split. Um, we would like, like to have it all delivered or even all, all pick it up, but, uh, I just don't see it happening right now. And the stone, we do not need to, and that could easily be done. We could truck, you know, after all the sand is done, if you, if you, the sand pile you'll see up there by the tool shed, the stone will go in front of the ramp for the, uh, you know, right on, on the tool shed end. So it'll go on in front of that ramp. We do not need to put all thousand yards up at once. We can put it in three, four hundred yards. And then, uh, slow days in winter time, restock it. And towards spring, if we don't use it all, you know, we don't buy it all.
Right.
Just buy what you need. And the sand will never go to waste, but the stone, you don't want to have to move out of the way later. You'd rather end the year with no, with no stone.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
You. Entertained, uh, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with the winter sand one first. I assume we're going to do these separate.
That'd be the way I would go.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, okay, I recommend, uh, accepting the town of Rockingham, accept JP Trucking's winter sand proposal of nine dollars cubic yard FOB for twenty-two hundred and fifty cubic yards of sand and fourteen fifteen for twenty-two fifty cubic sand delivered, uh, for a total of fifty-two thousand and eighty-eight dollars.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve winter sand purchase. Any other discussion? All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes.
Winter stone. I recommend the town accept the Cold River Materials Winter Stone Proposal of seventeen dollars a ton FOB or, I don't know, it doesn't sound right, or twenty-eight dollars ninety cents cubic yard for a thousand cubic yards of stone for a total of twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor would signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We get those, we got those numbers right on the second one, I think. Sort of says up top.
Yep.
Okay, we have, next we have, uh, Green Mountain Pole Permit Request.
Okay, uh, this request is actually lower Addison Street. You could pretty much sell, tell by the picture. Um, the picture was taken on a rainy day, but right, uh, down near the, used to be the flower shop or the antique center there. You'll see the first pole on the left. And then the next one just beyond on the right, and then a little further up, you can barely see it. Further up is none along the right. Those three poles are actually need to be replaced in order for them to, uh, continue this, uh, I think it's a high speed, let's see, I think I put it in here somewhere, high speed communication up to the central school. The one on the, the first one on the left, you'll see, is actually just about ready to fall over anyway. I requested that it be moved to the backside of sidewalk, at least a distance of six feet, if not a little bit more. So someday if this sidewalk is ever redone, maybe it's going to be a, instead of five foot walk, it might be a, a six foot walk, including the curve. So push it back a little bit closer to the tree, and I believe they're taking that tree down as well. And the other two on the other side of the road will be pushed back as well. So. I got my recommendation there. I said I recommend approve the pole permit request with the condition to hold the, that the old pole be removed within a period of one year and authorize chairman to sign the attached plan prepared by Green Mountain Power.
Second. I can.
Uh, recommend the town approve the pole permit request with the condition that the old pole be removed within a period of one year and authorize the chairman to sign the attached plan prepared by Green Mountain Power.
I got.
Motion's been made and seconded. Want me to sign this copy, Everett?
Sure, if you can sign that copy and, and if, uh, give that to Chuck, we'll get it back tomorrow.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, uh, for the street pole permit, Green Mountain Power, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. I'll sign this and leave it with, uh, okay, that, um, concludes that section. Next. Probably sticking around with this one too, uh, Academy Ave Extension. The Alley Saxton River Sidewalk Discussion Roof. Who wants to go first?
Do you want me to run, run a little history on this or, or what? Seems like I got all the paperwork in front of me.
Peter, yeah, go ahead and start.
I don't want to hear the whole history.
Yeah, I, I believe Chuck has the same copies, but, uh, goes way back to nineteen twenty-nine when people presented a petition to the then select board to have a sidewalk put in from, uh, Main Street down to River Street between that building and the church. So we have proof that, that the select board did approve that active action. Uh, later on, nineteen thirty, they laid the sidewalk out. Same place. It describes the meets and bounds, you know, the pins and all that stuff in there. Nineteen, uh, eighty-six, uh, we have a deed here from Andy Wind with a right of way between the two buildings. Gives them measurements of about a ten foot right of way and, uh, that went, I think that went to the church. It doesn't specifically say so because as Chuck writes, it's kind of kinky language. You got to be a legal beagle to read it, but anyway, uh, bottom line is that the town is responsible for that sidewalk, uh, that they laid out. And I couldn't find anything when the roof was installed, but it hadn't been done through select board minutes, and I'm sure it was probably done before nineteen sixty, which nobody can find the select board minutes at town hall. So it's anybody's guess, but, uh, somewhere in the eighties or nineties, uh, it was repaired by the town because my wife would be in the zoning administrator at that point, and health officer remembers the town doing some work to that sidewalk and roof area. So gets it up to us. Either we fix, uh, want to repair the building, uh, or I mean, the, the roof to that. Uh, there's several options, but it could involve a lot of a bit of legal expense to do a title search as to who owns what and where it goes and, and, uh, who's still responsible. So I guess the board decision as to whether we want to fix it or, or whatever.
Well, sounded from some of the last conversation, you know, that was a, uh, I would say a frequently used route to go from the lower side there up to the Main Street Saxton River. So question is, does it get to warrant, I guess, repairing and maintaining it? Otherwise you throw up what's class four?
Class four now.
It's linked to class four road and obligated to provide maintenance on it. Peter Golick's research clarifies for me that you're not establishing presence. clarifies for me that you're not establishing precedent of maintenance on class four roads, that this is a unique situation. Therefore, we're not going to get other petitions from other class four roads. This is its own animal. I do want the board to consider repair and potential discontinuance of this public asset. Make sure you know it's in your interest to keep or not.
Well, the first thing before we decide what we want to do is I'm not in favor of, that thing either needs a complete reconstruction. Needs a lot of roofing material and either boards or plywood, the whole structure, in my opinion, is, I would never put a new roof on top of that. All the posts go into the earth, aflam are rotted, they're not sitting on concrete. The triple two by six carrier is twisted and cracked and failing as well. The best quality in that system is actually the roof rafters, which might be salvageable. Just about all the rest of it should be repaired. Should we entertain doing this project? Should be further the discussion on what to do? I think it needs to be more involved discussion as to what to do. It needs more than a roof. So that's, that's my opinion with what we need to do here, which would, I don't know, entitle the land homeowner, perhaps on both sides, more maybe a better discussion about moving forward here. Get some prices for a total repair. Entertain discussion about removing it. Not in favor of putting a roof on that at the taxpayers' expense.
I think you're in right track there, Gattano, that we get a, we should look at an estimate for the total replacement before we make a decision here. See how much money we're going to possibly get into here.
So that'd be something the homeowner would want to get some estimates. Would we want to do that? I mean, he got this roof estimate, right?
Yeah, I think Buckner got that, and then he dumped it on us to, if we want to do something with that out there that we deal with the roofer direct. So I guess we can go back to the roofers and see what they want to do with it.
Yep, and at this point, I think the last time we discussed it, we wanted to verify that we did in fact were responsible for maintenance. It appears we are, so now we can go over here with a recommendation of what we would do to repair that properly. Most things we discuss, we like to buy things that last, so let's continue in that fashion. Yes, Susan?
If I remember, the roofing, we had the roofing bid and he said something about four hundred dollars per post. Is that right? My memory right on that?
I think you're right.
There was eight or ten, so already we're talking an extra almost four thousand dollars or something just for that part. So I think you're right. Get, get a real final quote on what the total project would be.
Yep, and it's more than the post, the beam that carries the rafters, the ledger against the building, the roof decking, all of it. It's really should be looked at closer.
Well, let me ask you.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine posts, all forty-five braces, carrying beam, ledger, roof rafters.
So what's our obligation to be throw up the road? You have to remove the structure?
I think that's a discussion we can have. Let's bring everyone together and move forward on how to approach it. Originally it was just make sure we owned it. Now we, you know, I'll say it again, we verified that, so now what do we do going forward? I think we have some options to do some work and then come back with another discussion and hope to take some action then. How's that? I mean, at this point, I'm not ready to take any to do much, except we just need to do some more work and address it. It's been neglected and we'll get it resolved.
Sounds like an idea to me.
Can I throw one thing out there? So one thing to consider, if you do throw this road up is, you know, are there any drainage pipes heading down through there or sewer pipes or even water pipes?
I think there's a lot to consider if that's an option. I don't know if that's an option. Stefan brought it up, so we have a lot of things to look at. Right? I think Peter had mentioned Christchurch might be involved as well, right? They might own part of it. We're not really sure.
Yeah, and you're looking at some legal bucks there, you know.
Maybe I'll find the minutes and have all the answers on it and help answer some questions, or we'll just keep moving forward with what we need to do at this point. How's that? Okay, so let's move on. Gary's been waiting. Gary and Peter, Gary, you're up if you'd like. So next, number four recycle center.
Hey, I'm not sure what you have in front of you, but I was asked to speak specifically to two items. One of them is an RFP for the recycling trucking and processing. We're in our third year of a three-year contract right now, which runs out on June thirtieth. The, there was a provision in that contract that for extensions, if both parties were agreeable to it. We indicated our agreement to extend it. However, the contractor that we're using declined to extend it past the three years. So we've had to go out and get with an RFP for recycling services. Again, because of the short turnaround and because their services were offered, we took up the the solid waste district's executive director's offer to get this together and going for us. He's the one that did it the last time and got us a good three-year contract. He just finished up getting another towns out and was willing to do ours, get it out there again. Other than that, we're progressing with it. The RFP is going to be in this week's paper, it's been posted on the website. We'll have something in place by June thirtieth.
You have numbers, Gary, or you're just telling about you're trying to get numbers?
We don't have numbers yet. The RFP, the numbers are due on June fifth.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
This is an introduction that the RFP had to be released post haste and to heads up.
Right. You got there? Yep.
Yep. So that was, that was it on that. Don't have any numbers yet. I'll give you a warning. We had a very good deal with the three-year contract we had, and that's part of the reason with the contract, they didn't want to sign off for an extension. He took it hard. He took a hard hit because of what. He can bid on the new one.
Okay.
He said he would, he would consider bidding, rebidding again, but not under the terms that we were under, so.
Probably your next item. Yep. This, this price sheet, will that be, will that be impacted by the result of these RFPs? Should we be?
The price sheet should not be impacted by that because we don't charge for recycling. So there shouldn't be an impact.
Tires?
There'd be an impact on our overall budget, but not particularly on these prices. We did anticipate some additional costs this year, and that's why we're recommending going up on some of the prices. We didn't feel that the market would bear going up on the excess sticker cost again. So we deferred to raising prices on the per items, which haven't been done in a number of years. Like, I know I, we did do a few adjustments early on when I took over, which is almost twenty years now, I guess. So I don't think they've been adjusted a whole lot, so this will be a good time to do that. The only other one would, that will have some impact and is on our operation, and we're going to have to move with it fairly quick, is the cost of the stickers, not the stickers, the tickets. We're using the dollar quarter tickets right now, the dump tickets or whatever you want, trash tickets. They're a dollar and quarter redemption value on them, and the recommendation is to increase that to a dollar fifty redemption value on the tickets. So your fifteen gallon white bag would be a dollar fifty, your thirty gallon bag would be three bucks. And your compactor bags, contractor bags would be four fifty. So that is the recommendation as far as price increase goes. I've been in contact with our printer who's doing our stickers. I don't have those yet. We're hoping to have the stickers available. I'm back to stickers again for a second. We hope to have the stickers available by June first to start getting them out there. But they're also working under a slowdown on their end of things because of this coronavirus recommendations, be safe recommendations. So they're working with a smaller crew. We believe we'll have them in time to get them out there by June first. But we'll definitely have them by, by June thirtieth.
I have a question.
They are in.
Peter said they're in and they're saying back here they're in.
Beautiful.
Town clerk, yep. Town clerk showed me them the other day.
Great.
His office. I have a question, just to clarify, when I first asked my question, you said it wouldn't affect the recycling cost. So not having our new numbers, you've said that we've got a good deal for three years. We're probably not anticipating that same deal, right?
Right.
Considerable, considerable increase in, in cost for us, right?
Yep.
So my question would go back to the price increases. Is that we're adjusting them already prior to knowing how much our increase is going to be? Is that a safe thing to do or perhaps do we want to look at the ticket fees and make sure that we're not going to be worse than we were or about the same? I think the goal is to not lose money in the recycling business. So if the RFPs come back much higher than we've been paying on this deal that the guy surely doesn't want to do again, and we've only made a slight increase in our fees, where are we going to be at? I know you can't answer that, but that's, I think, what the question.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. What, what my problem was is what do we do is, you know, come July first? As far as if we're putting increases out, we just need to let people know what they're going to be. If you want to wait, that's fine too.
When may I please be back?
The RFP for the recycling is due back to us on June fifth.
So that's the three-year contract you're saying recycling? That's just for trucking of the material or this is?
Trucking and, trucking and processing. We pay a fee, a flat fee for the trucking, and then we'd be paying per ton for the processing of the recycling.
Okay, and then the bags, is that, are we also having to get a new contract for that, like the?
No, that one's, that one's still, that's still a good contract. That's still in place.
Okay, okay. That clears up my question, I think.
Okay.
The bag price is going to stay the same. Follow me?
Yeah.
As far as our removal disposal.
As far as the trash, the solid way, the municipal trash, those are, we're still in a good contract with that. Those aren't going to adjust up like the recycling likely will.
Okay.
Okay, just to put a little background here, I did a bunch of research here. Went to four area towns that were experiencing people coming in from Town of Walpole, Brattleboro, Putney, Springfield, Chester people come in. And I also went to, we don't have anybody, anybody coming from Charlestown, but I did get printed off their rate and everything. Walpole does not use an access sticker charge. They don't care who comes in. They weigh their bags. If you're not from Walpole, if you've got a Walpole bag, it says Town of Walpole, trash on it, you can buy those, ten bags for twenty bucks. So it's about two dollars a bag. Anybody else, they weigh the bags and you pay thirty cents a pound. All the appliances and, and stuff that we take, we're comparable in prices with them. It's a little higher than what they're getting in Walpole. Brattleboro requires an access sticker. They get forty dollars down there. They also have roadside pickup. Their bags are, they have two bag sizes, a fifteen gallon, which is a white one, two bucks. A thirty-two gallon, which is next one up, is three bucks. We're in the same ballpark with them as far as the prices for refrigerators, et cetera, et cetera. I do have this information. I've been glad to hand it over to Chuck if he wants to look at it. Charlestown is the real fun one. They charge fifty dollars for their sticker. It's required recycling over there, mandatory recycling, they call it. Even have fines if they catch you doing something wrong over there. First offense is twenty-five bucks, second offense is fifty, and the third one is seventy-five bucks and lose your ability to use the facility. So they, as they say, their sticker, access sticker is fifty dollars for the first one and five bucks for the second one. And it's only Charlestown residents that can use the site, no one else. They don't allow anybody else in.
What do they pay for bag, Peter? Or that's included with that?
Come back.
Can you hear me?
What'd you say?
What did, what does Charlestown pay per bag? Or is that included with their fifty dollar Charlestown resident fee?
Uh, no, 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 no. You ought to really read it. It's kind of interesting.
How much is a per bag for Charlestown? Do you know?
Trying to see what they get for bag here. Hang on, I've got two pages of stuff here.
And then when you were given, you said comparable to us a couple of times. Is that comparable to these? Your new, the new pricing or what we've had now are new?
Yeah, comparable to the new pricing. We, and some of the prices that we are, we are proposing would be a little higher than what they're getting, which might, you know, cause some of those people instead of piling in our facility to go back where they belong there. Uh, if you want to call it that, I hate to say it, but.
Well, you're looking for that, Peter.
They're even charging for food scraps over there now. So we, that's something we're not charging for currently because it's not effective until July first. Let me see if I can find.
Peter.
Yep.
Gary has some more comment. Are you, you want to hold off while you look for that or do you have more?
Yeah, go ahead. Let him go ahead.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out one thing that was on those price, recommended price increases was an increase in the scale. Price. We are recommending going from the ten cents a pound to fifteen cents a pound. If you recall, this year we went, this past year, we went from seven to ten. And we're going to recommend going up another nickel in the upcoming budget.
Did you not say Walpole's thirty cents a pound?
Uh, let's see, it was Walpole. No, they're saying the fifteen, fifteen cents a pound. Their weight stuff, a lot of it's fifteen cents a pound. Everything they take over the scale is fifty cents, but they also believe they charge a scale fee. Walpole's got charges. I'm looking at Charlestown. Charlestown charges a ten dollar scale fee. Plus what it costs you to get rid of the stuff. So every time you come across, you've got to pay ten bucks plus what you weigh.
Anything else right now?
I think I have addressed.
I think I can. Go ahead, Gary.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just say, I think I've addressed what Chuck had asked me to address, so I'm willing to answer questions or.
Ready? Chuck has another item, but Peter, did you have any more pertaining to the pricing?
Well, the only, the only thing I've, I've just wondered is the press release. I mean, as Gary said, we should let people know what we're thinking of doing here, and I have one that's done. If we need to modify it or any way I can get it in, I think Chuck's got a copy of it. If he needs to do anything modifying, but at least that we'll get it out. We need to get it to the town of Westminster. But at least that will get it out. We need to get it to the Town of Westminster uh by the 31st or by the end of the month, so they can get into Westminster, cause that, that's where everybody gets that paper free down there.
I think we had that same press release here unless it's different. I think we're all looking at.
Yeah, there's nothing different to it that I put on it, just, you know, it's just telling them that the stickers are available and will be available, et cetera, et cetera, and, and the price for the trash bags. They know there's nothing for.
Okay.
The recycling, we're not charging for that yet, so. And the food scraps, I said, we're gonna, I think I put it in there that we were gonna watch it and see if we get an influx after July 1st, it's uh, we may start to charge after we get a little history on how much of that stuff we're taking in.
Yep. Chuck's got another input here, if you're ready, we're ready.
Yeah, the press release, response to access stickers, access stickers are time sensitive, so that needs to go out. I would ask the board to consider um the fee structure, holding that for right now, because we are established, some recommendations to establish a recycle center committee, we have sent a solicitation, we've had um inquiry from our two people, and I'd like them to look at that fee structure and um recognize it, and make recommendations for this board to consider it an act. This committee will be a five-member committee that is up for debates for a total of five weeks, and they will then give you recommendations to this board at its first regular meeting in August. So this is a relatively narrow time window to look at all the operations, all the costs, we'll have the RFP from the recycling, we'll have a good handle on what's going on, and be able to give you a set of recommendations to include modification of the fees.
So what was the timing on the press release? No later than? Okay. Anything else we need to do right now on this?
The, the other thing, uh, can I, can I speak or is someone still talking?
Go ahead.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna, I think I put it in there, is that we need to enforce the use of trash tickets. That's what causes a lot of backup, cause people come in and they'll throw their trash bags in there, and then they run over to the cash, cashier to pay for their trash. If they had the tickets, it'd be easier for them to throw the tickets right in the bucket that we have at the place and move on. It's gonna save a lot of time and effort and traffic control down there.
I think there's a lot of things that the committee will hopefully look at.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that's, that's stuff, the operations and the whole mess, it's gonna go down now. Chuck and I have discussed some things there, so I'm sure Gary has too.
Excellent. Anything else, Gary? Thank you very much.
One other thing?
Yes, sir.
I know you, I know you're tired and you're ready to get going, but I just wanna put in a plug for, for the help that my guys down there that have been uh working during this whole pandemic thing, um Bob Fogg, Eric Davis, Brad Nelson, um, they've done a great job, they're there every day, they're very attentive and aware of what's going on with the pandemic and making a, uh, keeping the operation going despite the difficult circumstances. Just wanna put a public plug in for them.
Thank you very much, and thank them all as well.
Thank you. That's it.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, I think we can move on from recycling and move to number uh five, finance and human resources. Shannon, would you like to come closer so I can hear you? Are you okay back there? Yeah, you can sit there. Shannon's gonna move a little closer so you guys can hear. Hopefully.
So I don't have anything significant to note in these financials. Um, we are going to meet with uh the village president and the select board um chair to go over year-to-date before the end of the year. Um, I, at this time, I don't have any concerns, but I can try and answer any questions that you guys may have.
I, I have none at this time, and it was June 2nd, I think we're gonna try to get a little in-depth update, right?
Correct, yes.
Shouldn't know where we stand better for the end of year.
Correct. Peter, Susan, any questions right now? Here to date?
Not right now, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you.
And please feel free to email me anytime if you have questions after the meeting, and I'll, I'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Up and overtime.
I highlighted the um towns employees, so uh I think the only real significant anything was Chuck and I, um which is mine allocated half to the town, half to the village.
Any questions? Overtime, um, she highlighted the town employees, that's nice, helpful. Yeah, moving on. There's no policy. This is the final draft, updated, edited version.
It is, um, may make up one comment.
Yes.
So the trustees won't be approving this until their June 9th meeting, so if you guys wanna take one more um stab at it and review it, it's not urgent that you go ahead and approve it this evening. We'd like to do it at your first select board meeting in June.
You hear that?
That'd be good.
We have some more time to read it, it's pretty long, there's been some changes, and it looks like, I think, the changes began, this final draft been highlighted. So I, I'd like to do that, does anyone have an objection to that? You know, at June 1st meeting, is it?
Sounds, sounds good to me, I hear if you think this need to be, maybe changed here.
Yep, just make your edits and uh perhaps even you get them beforehand, and then we, when we show up, we could uh have another, if there's changes or just typos, but we'll have some more time to look at this. Is that okay, everyone?
Yes.
Fine with me.
Susan, you say? Okay, great. All right, so that was it, short and sweet on that, thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Uh, so so we can put that, so let's review agenda items for the next meeting, June 2nd, 2020. You can simply write that on there, Chuck, we'd like to finalize personnel rules, updated. Where will we be with a recycling um committee by then?
We'll have one established.
Have one established. What else?
Everett has a laundry list to include um introduction of our interim highway superintendent Andy, who will be here.
And the, and the, sorry, so the, we're gonna put the new fire chief from Rockingham on the agenda, we would like to formally introduce him. He came tonight and I, we missed the opportunity. We're gonna put him on the agenda for next time, for folks, formal introduction. Uh, the new interim highway superintendent.
Anything else?
Nothing I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sax, Sax, whatever.
Yeah.
The, looking at.
Maybe we'll get somewhere by then, if we reached out to some uh the Buckner and see where we can go, Peter, I don't know where we'll be, but we could leave that as a potential item.
Yeah.
That, that's it for now, you guys have anything else you can think of?
Nope, not off the top of my head.
Still there, Peter?
No, I don't, uh, I don't have anything unless I finally think of something between now and then, I can get you in plenty of time, or get Chuck, whatever.
Yep, so um, we can review agenda items for the next joint board meeting, which would be June 30th.
We may have the Bell's Hall's Opera House available to present a new model for business. Technically, that is a town asset, but it would be a good forum to conduct it in a combined meeting, so that our Opera House employees can do their presentation of the changes that they're going to recommend post-pandemic, so when they open up, they are promising to open up with a new model of operations.
Well, if anything else, we'll uh get ahold of the manager, and not hearing anything from you guys, I think we're okay for now. Need to review and approve orders, bills, and warrants.
Motion to approve. So moved.
Stefan made the motion, Peter, you wanna second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion seconded to approve orders, bills, and warrants, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 This is. Other business, Susan?
Oh, I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, did you uh bring up that thing about the MSA that you sent the uh email out about? And.
I didn't, but.
You and I talked a little bit more about the stuff they still got at Town Hall.
I didn't, I was going to, if you'd like to just explain, and uh, go ahead. I didn't bring it up, but would you like to?
Well, I think uh you and I discussed it on the side of the road there this, uh, this morning, but you had sent out an email that they're, they're uh pretty much closing up their doors for a while, and they still got that uh set down there on the stage and, and Town Hall, plus stuff, I think downstairs in that room, I think you told me they're storing stuff. I don't know if we wanna ask them uh if there's any action, we need to have them to remove that stuff in case they never open.
I think that's a good idea, the announcement yesterday, I don't have it verbatim, um, I don't know if anybody does, it's a I don't wanna, I don't wanna try it because I, I don't have verbatim, but it's, it doesn't look like there's gonna be any operations soon, so I think um we should get in touch and discuss the stage, um especially in anticipation of what Chuck had just said about new operations in the Opera House, and anything in the Town Hall, we need to figure out where we're at with Main Street Arts moving forward with this uh agreement.
Um, consider that request, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, anything else, Peter?
No, I was just running through to see if I could find that in my email here. Help you out a little bit, but I can't.
I got it.
Sitting right off quick.
The announcement, I have it here, um, but Ben, anything?
Uh, I don't have anything right now, no.
Did you get it, Stefan? I sent it.
If I can pull it up, yeah.
Here, so it's um
I got it here if you want it.
Yeah, go ahead. Just summarize why, why they're making that announcement, I think, and what it, it's a pretty long email. Go ahead.
They're gonna, after July 7th, it says they'll no longer employ any staff and will cease all programming, including theater classes and other events. Uh, hot work on our physical space, meaning the building out here, improvements, fundraising will also be suspended during dormancy. There will be minimal use of the MSA building, and the board of directors will be responsible for unnecessary facility and financial oversight. Legal organization will remain. Uh, that pretty much covers it, uh, that uh pretty much closing the doors up, so they can see the green on the other side of you.
Yes, they're calling it a state of dormancy due to COVID-19 pandemic, and like you said, the rest of it.
Right.
Yep.
Exactly, yep.
Yep. Nothing, Ben? No. I don't have anything. Stefan?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, we do have an executive session to discuss, and we, yep, somebody wanna make, you gotta.
I don't have the criteria, I can probably wing it, but uh.
Go ahead.
All right.
Get him, Mike, Chuck. I don't know, if you do wanna call my phone again, probably in a minute.
Yeah, let's see, uh, I got the card, what's the session, what's the session for?
Conditions of employment or.
Conditions of employment, uh contractual.
Appointment or employment evaluation of public officer, is that the one you want?
I would say self-employment, which is.
Yeah, that's the one I got here, okay. When we're ready, let me know, and I'll, I can read it off.
Go ahead, sir. Ready?
Okay, I moved that the board enter executive discussion to, to accession to discuss um, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer employed, but the public body must make a final decision to hire or appoint in an opening meeting, and it must explain the reasons for this final decision for via V, one VSA, subchapter 313, parentheses A, parentheses 3.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, enter executive session. Um, did you say invite Chuck? Sorry. I was fumbling my papers, Peter.
I didn't say to invite Chuck, no, I didn't know what you wanted to do with that.
We'd like to.
All right, we'll just add that on and, and invite the uh, invite uh Mr. Wise, I don't know, what better way do we get to, to that point before we call him something else?
So, motion been made and seconded and to invite uh Chuck Wise, acting manager, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye.